All right, Ms. Lambert, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much. Good evening. And welcome to the six-foot plan for the Thursday, February 22nd. Will be held here in this select four hearing. Where we get Mr. Armberger.
Hello.
Hello. This is an important meeting. There's no, no access tonight. Because we had some technical difficulties. So the only people allowed will be our lawyer. Mr. Eaton, if I don't lose him in class today.
Ethan Dibway.
Mr. Dibway, Scott Thornton, and then just help me hear from TEC Engineering, T E C, later. I would like to start the meeting. By saying that I appreciate everybody coming back. For we get some stuff out.
Thank you.
We are going to conduct the meeting that it will tell us. Like a goal of yours, we've got to pass what we know, the response to. We are not going to have a meeting like we did the last time. Everyone's got to keep their cover. And I'm going to raise our voices, but what are we about? It will not get, we all want to go to the same place. This has been over a year now, so we're better. We'll stop and wrap this up. But. We all need to be adults in the same meeting, okay? Let's flip. Oh, at 6:30. My whole problem, we continue public hearing, a site plan, administrative review, and a special permit for three. Multi-family buildings in a stormwater permit in the Village Center in the neighborhood district. North Central Village District, Auto Village, blah, blah, blah. Option C properties. Mr. Gray, if you can to present your, who's up to us. Oh. So, that's okay.
I will be presenting agenda.
Is there a second? On the bit. I ain't going to here.
Okay.
So, Bill Armberger, just a brief introduction for those who here. Is Kevin Gray, who you know as our architect, Jimmy Teller, excuse me, I'm an engineer. Jimmy Teller, who's also with Scott Phillipin. Traffic engineer is the owner of the property, Chris Blue Strong, who can't be sanctioned. Since, since our last meeting, which we had. Conservation Commission, as I said last meeting, will try to do as possible, turn over the cabinet, and sort of begin. Whatever the board of Karen. How you want to proceed with all of that. But a few, a few of the things, conservation is just continuing, they're ready to close the heat on the set view. But if things are moving along, I think things are going to move along. Based on recommendations, I talked with Karen and I talked earlier, try to get this out so it doesn't have to drag out in pieces. Is, you know, the designer or sign. The U P D look what, which is a consistent with what we expected. In addition to that, we have an agent, we will put in writing, you know, waiver. And after speaking with Karen, monitoring agent, I'm involved in some other projects in Metro West Collaborative. I think. The idea is if you have one monitoring agent, that is probably better for. And so that's perfectly acceptable, what most of us also. As far as designated, Jamie will have the five or four, we want to spread them out amongst the three buildings in this. Free two bedrooms, one, one three bedroom, one, one bed. And, and I actually, of the units, in. In building one, it's unit one, which is, which is two bedrooms, that's how they set up. In building two, it's unit four, which is two, two bedrooms. And in building three, there is unit 13, which is a three-bedroom unit, and also unit two, which is one bed. Okay? And so. We'll put in writing any of the way of requests, any of the other things that I think substantial. Kevin is going to get into is all of that stuff. A couple of things, D P W recommendations such as putting the, the. Kevin will talk a little more about this, is put as the granite curbing at the entrance and all that stuff. That's acceptable, and all of that is there. We are going to, Kevin is going to talk, and I did speak earlier, as far as. As the board request, we queried it with D P W, how instead of the old land flow that complies with the. Designed to comply with the stormwater by law. That can you tie into this? And. The Kevin's going to, he'll talk a little more, look at this, it's kind of a quagmire, so our proposal was to move it in. And we also want to see in that, is that like one of the standard conditions in the stormwater are made is that if for some reason. This doesn't work as they had it designed, then. We have to come back and, and review that.
Can we put that in that?
Yes, yeah, right. So, so it's in this, I think, I think we're coming from that standpoint. Remember, request any special permits, Karen told me as, as. With the Bob Vogel zoning enforcement officer, we made a request to do the recent, and we responded for the administrative board probably. Just reviewing that, and Karen's also discussing with Karen, that's one.
I'm just, I just, Bob Vogel wrote her letter to the building, I mean. O D H wrote a letter to the building commissioner after the last meeting, inquiring if there's a special permit is needed for the length of building one. I did not provide you the letter, but town council has seen the letter. And that's one of the reasons town council is here tonight. Town council wants to listen to the facts, so. When it gets in time for architecture, we want to know exactly what's happening with building one. And then them town council will provide a written opinion of what if a special permit is needed or not. So that question is still up in the air, but we're going to hopefully resolve that in the next few days. So what we want to make clear too, is that at the end of this meeting, we're going to have a summary of what can we read to tonight. And what are still on scale. That's what we have, we have a real to message, so that. We can't say, oh, I don't need that for us tonight. Yeah, we put around a woman, we want that, right?
Okay, so, at this point, because I was, I don't steal. Kevin, why don't you?
Sure. So, Bill covered a little bit of this, the last meeting, I think one of the. Big things that was hanging out there was whether or not we're going to connect directly to that. Catch basin. I'll get into that, I guess.
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone, because sometimes.
My voice doesn't boom like pills. I try to talk like pills. Um. Alright, so since the last hearing, I've received a handful of peer review. Letters, emails from D P W and emails from Karen, and I've prepared an outline basically of. What we intend, tend to do in response to all of these. We received a peer review comments from T E C. On Tuesday. Both for the site. Review and the traffic review. So obviously, we haven't had time to. Update the plans, but I did outline what we intend to do for responses. They're somewhat lengthy, because they've been going on for a long time, but I'll just get to the, get to the chase on them. The first comment. Was regarding hand railings on the proposed. Accessible ramps. We'll add railings. We didn't have details on sheet 32 showing. Railings required on both sides. We did have callouts on the sheets, but we will add. Railing lines, I think in some of the sheets, they'll be difficult to see. Because of the scale, and we'll add that. The next comment was regarding roof drain. Cover over roof drain pipes. I will review those and make sure that we have a foot of cover on that, that's. Pretty simple to look at. Next comment was regarding the pipe connections to. The manhole in question, that's in the layout at the Plaza Town Line. I think Wednesday. From Attorney Armberger's opening that. We don't intend to connect to that, we'd like to, but would be required to replace it, and that's replace the whole manhole. That is what D P W indicated we'd have to do if we wanted to connect to it. It's problematic to. Do the work in the town's layout on the town property, the townway, et cetera, et cetera. And. The existing condition, we've analyzed the stormwater, we analyzed the pre-development condition. And that resulted in a certain amount of flow off of the site that goes out onto Countryway, flows down the gutter line into. This catch basin. It also goes over land and goes into this catch basin. And it has a certain flow amount. We did analysis of the post-development site. And we've, the result is that we've reduced the flow to this catch basin. It's just a matter of how we're going to get it to this catch basin. Our preference would be to pipe it, because it's much neater, it's cleaner, it works better. But it's, it's not an easy situation. So we're basically going to go overland and probably some sort of crushed stone swell. Okay? Next comment was on. Snow storage. The comment was that we. Cover too many spaces with our proposed snow storage, so we'll reduce that, we will reduce that. To a area that leaves open the required number of spaces.
Can I ask a question about snow storage?
Fifty-seven, I can, yes, you can ask a question on snow storage.
So, is it the intent that the plow is just going to plow up the driveway? And then you have like a front-end loader to move the snow into the snow storage areas?
Yeah, on, on, on large storms, yes. On small storms, I think we can just push it to the edges and. We'll have melting, and if, if we do get. Multiple storms in a row, we can, there is areas that we can store it on site where it can slowly melt, and you know, you can pile it up. So we'll be able to take up, I believe, eight parking spaces throughout the site.
So it was originally fourteen, it's down to eight?
Yes. That was T E C's site. Comments, so we narrowed it down to five or six, and the last one was talking about a detailed construction sequence prior to the start of work. We'll agree to that condition. It's much easier when you have the site contractor. And the engineer working on that together to lay that out. Then we received, we had an email from Karen on February 7th, some of these are the same. The first comment was regarding railings. I will update the site plan to show railings graphically. Tactile warning. Devices at the end of handicap ramps, we'll add those, no problem. The D P W requires cast iron. We will use cast iron in the, in the layout. As required, I requested a detail, which I received Wednesday, I believe, so I can add that detail and that specification. Karen asked about the number of accessible routes. There's actually one main accessible route that follows the. Main traveled way, which is the requirement of. Architecture access board, and that. Acceptable route goes from the entrance of Countryway. Along the driveway, all the way up to building three. You can access building two from the. From the accessible spaces, both in the front and the rear. So there is two ways to get into that. Building three, the accessible spaces to the front door. We did not provide a. Full walkway to the back doors, more of a stepping stones, aesthetic type layout. On that though. So basically, the answer is we have one. Accessible route, remaining accessible.
Can I ask, so the other, the back walkway along what was, what was the old accessible route, is that still going to remain, or are you taking that walkway out, or?
Yeah, we are taking that walkway out where the old ramp was, along the. This, this part right here, we're going to eliminate this ramp. Pedestrians still will be able to walk down a grassed area here. We're going to keep. This walkway, a walkway here with stairs.
Okay, so you're removing part of that.
Correct.
Again, the rest of it is nothing here, you know, right? It's got to go in front of the building, it's yeah, right?
Um, partially, I, you know, you could circle this, this whole area is flat accessible. Building three is in the front, yes.
On the building one.
Yes.
How are people going to enter those three doorways? Are you putting ramps, or is there all stairs?
It's, it's an existing building that's not set up for accessibility. I don't think there's a way to, because they're on the first floor and the second floor. Correct, so they're not accessible units, however, the two new buildings are completely accessible.
I understand that. But, so basically, what you're saying is. This will not be A D A accepted.
Then we have to do. Significant work, add an elevator, more than fifty percent of the value.
No, I think what I was asking you, Kevin, is if you're in the parking lot, time to get to the building. Visit, just to see, so they walk around before.
They can go either, the back is probably the easiest way. And that. Connects to where I currently have the accessible parking. This is nice and flat through here, there is a one step up, there's a few steps. Along the front, however, we are going to raise this grade, so I believe it'll be one step up into this.
So may I ask for Karen, because it's not a renovated building, it doesn't have the A D A accessible, right?
The question I have is this. There is an issue with site distances. Why would you need, if this is not A D A compliant, why would you need two accessible parking spaces there? Why not put them up above so that you can utilize that piece of land? For your entrance?
I think you're jumping ahead.
I am.
But that is one of my questions here, so that's, that's. But let him, let him get, let him get to that.
But it is not handicapped accessible in any way, shape, or form.
No.
No, okay.
We, so we're required to have six accessible spaces. We spread them out over the site. There is walkways that are usable. To get into that building, so basically, we spread it out over the site, and we, we had a minimum of six that we had to. Propose.
But none of them for building one, those don't count.
They do count.
Well, they do count, because they have an accessible route to all of the buildings.
Put them, when you don't need them there, put them something else, because.
We have visitors that might want to go to building one, that may have the opportunity to get up into the building and another, you know, with assistance.
And the other issue being is that you don't want to take up all your parking for building two and three, because you're not supposed to park in handicap spaces if you're not in there. That's a big thing to tell me.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
I'm happy to have the discussion to move them, it's, and, and we, like, we, we are going to talk about moving the roadway as well. So, again, our initial thought was that we needed six, and we spread them out and with them near each building, because you do need accessibility sometimes. Even temporary, temporarily for residents in these, these spaces. So we thought that was an appropriate spot, but I. Happened to discuss moving them. Walks must be forty, walks must be forty-eight inches wide, all the walks are at least forty-eight inches wide, the ramps are all five feet wide with railings, about forty-eight inch. Spacing between the rails. Need clarification on like curving and handicap parking spaces? I actually had a chance to discuss this with Karen and Bob Vogel. I think we addressed that, I had some details on one of the sheets that showed. How the handicap spaces were compliant, and that it did not propose two percent, more than two percent grade in any direction. And we did not actually have a firm that we needed to ramp up over because of the way we. Graded the parking spaces in the site. We basically graded the parking spaces to the gutter line. So any water flows off of the sidewalk through the parking spaces to the gutter line, so we didn't need to ramp up.
Can you just add that, they have curb stops, so that, so that they don't need the curbing by, you know, by where it. Why where it comes together with the space and the walkway, they have curb stops.
So the sidewalk is, pedestrians on the sidewalks at the end, yeah, they're protected by curb stops, not curbing. Usually double down on the curbing is a stormwater conveyance and pedestrian protection.
Would you consider ballards? Because, yeah, people are driving into buildings all the time, curb stops notwithstanding.
We can discuss that, but accidents happen all the time. I don't know how many ballards you want, I'm talking about just the accessible spaces. We'll discuss that internally, I guess, but I don't really have a strong.
There's only one place where the building and the parking are right together, isn't that building three? I mean.
For the building and the parking, yeah, but the sidewalks are everywhere, it's.
Well, I'm talking about building one.
Well, this potentially not going to be, okay, there's potentially not going to be parking there after we discussed this.
Thank you.
Requesting a double catch basin at the handicap space, I believe we actually have that proposed.
It's not, the building commissioner says it's not great to have the double catch base at the end of the handicap spaces. That, that's what, that's what the comment is directed at.
You missed, not, I missed the word, not.
It's not, it's not, it's not great to have in, in the handicap spaces, and that's all he was saying. If it can't work, it can't work.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I don't see it being a. It's actually up gradient of the. Handicap spaces, which is good, because you collect the water prior to crossing there, and then the. Accessible aisle in this case, so just so you can see, we have a double catch basin right here. The accessible aisle is here. I don't see it being a conflict in the location, because accessibility is, is in this direction. I can look at making it a single, but.
Oh, no, I think you might need the double.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying take away a double catch base, he just questions what, what adjacent to the handicap parking, that's what he questions.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we put it there for a reason.
But no, I, I get that.
A question regarding the impervious coverage from the initial application, that's obviously a fluid situation, we'll. We'll calculate that once we land on a final. Impervious coverage. Requesting affordable unit locations, we actually determined that earlier today, and we will provide those units for you in writing. Rear setback on sheet two. Does not match the table, I updated that, and the next set you'll be able to see that, and I'll have, I'll submit this exact letter, so you can.
Yep, yep.
E V charging station, we added an E V charging station, or, or well, I've already done some of these, basically, we're going to add an E V parking. Station here, that's going to be a double, basically, put it right on the parking strip between the two spaces. So you can charge two E V vehicles at that location.
You can hang on the other right parts, so that the big thing, that I did, that one fall subject.
Yeah.
So is two, is two E V spaces enough for the board? No? Yes. Well, I would say yes. Okay, okay.
A question on that drafting issue with the dry sewer, the existing condition sheet, I left one of the layers unfrozen, I'll take care of that. Question regarding condensers and fencing, planting, and drainage well. So there's condensers on buildings two and three on the ground, we're proposing to fence those in, I will add those to the landscape plan and detail those up. D P W comments dated February 15th. This first D P W's section talks about the connection to the catch basin. So. We are not, no longer requesting connection to that, as discussed. I'll ask for a few other things, disposition of an existing dry well, I've. I'll provide detail in my letter for them on that. And then D P W memo regarding the. Intersection of the driveway and the access, they requested that the cross occupied in thermoplastic paint, no problem, we'll take care of that. Vertical granite curb to be installed, we'll. We'll propose vertical granite curb within the layout, no problem. Concrete handicap ramps to be installed, the mast D O T standards on both sides of the entrance, including a landing pad. We'll propose that as well. And also cast iron compatible warning panels, three degree degree, we'll take care of all those items.
Those are on the memos that I sent you?
Yeah.
And then.
Can you elaborate on?
Yeah.
What is the disposition of this system dry?
So that is actually, our survey is mislabeled that, it's actually not a dry well, it's more of a manhole, sort of. It's a distribution box, basically, a four-inch pipe comes in, and then a four-inch pipe goes out, it's basically a ninety-degree turn, so I would relabel that.
But it's functional, right?
Yes, yeah.
What's the disposition of some of that?
I don't, I don't have the, on that, we'll have to take a look. I wasn't able to get into the property today to see that.
Are there existing self-help there?
I believe so, yeah. And. Believe that was stuff of those comments, then we received a. A peer review from T E C regarding the site distance issue. Suggested that we move the driveway ten feet to the north to increase the site distance. To the south. We'll make those changes, particularly, it'll be easier if I can relocate the handicap spaces that are there. The way we had it set up is I had to elongate those spaces to get up. Onto the flat. Accessible spaces, they're required to be no more than two percent in any direction, which is difficult on a hill, which the site is, so we may have to relocate this. Either, I, I think the flattest spot to relocate them is up here, there is an accessible route, it's, it's not. You know, adjacent to a building that we were trying to propose before, but it is. You know, it will add some green space here. We can reduce the whole, the total number by two, and still be over. The number of spaces and not add impervious, et cetera, we can actually take some impervious away, that's what we'd like.
Does the relocation of entrance result in adequate segments?
We have a lot to.
Yeah. So we. Our consultant, Scott Thornton from Vanessa's, indicated the things that's adequate site distances to begin with. But the discussion was how far off of the travel lane. I don't think really anybody starts fourteen feet back in reality from, on, on a driveway like this, maybe they do on a. A large intersection. Where you have two lanes of traffic in both directions, and you have high speeds, et cetera, on these driveways, you tend to creep up, and you're probably really looking from close to. Ten, nine, eight, as you, as you get up there, but when we move that over, it is going to elongate the, the site distance, and I believe that was. In the discussions between. Your traffic consultant and ours, and I guess we can ask them that question, because that was my last.
I think we should turn to the traffic side as well, we're on this issue, I think that would be a good idea. Why don't we let Mr. Thornton go first? And he can perhaps explain what moving the driveway ten feet, if he thinks it'll make the ashco standard.
Yeah, thank you, and Scott Thornton from Vanessa Associates here for the applicant, and that, you know, to be quite honest. Uh, and that, you know, to be quite honest, uh, we would have to check to see where the where the final driveway location winds up. Uh, to be able to determine what the what the site distance uh winds up being, but. You know, when you, when you start shifting the the driveway, um, you know, further away from that, from that retaining wall, which is really the. You know, the limiting factor, uh, we get an improvement that's probably greater than a than a one to one, so if we move it. If we move the driveway one foot to the north, we probably pick up a greater amount at the other, at the other end of the site triangle, so. You know, I I'd like to be able to say, yeah, move it ten feet and boom, you you have your distance. Um, but but once we get the final layout of the driveway, we either either uh. Look at the, look at how the sightline measures out using AutoCAD or or measure it out in the field to to determine exactly. What is the resulting site distance there?
Alright, so maybe we can have um the Towns Consulting Engineer Kevin, um, do you want to weigh in on this at the moment?
Certainly, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kevin Dandrid, I'm a principal at T E C. Uh, and I'm the principal peer reviewer on the traffic items on this application on behalf of the firm. Uh, Peter Ellison, one of my colleagues, uh, wasn't available this evening, but he had reviewed the civil aspects on the site plan that uh Mr. Grady had just described. But in reference specifically to the sightlines, um, I've spoken at length with Mistress Thornton, um, I've spoken with Karen. Uh, and I believe uh one or more of the planning board members was out for a field walk that we did together um before the winter hit, and. I I think Mr. Thornton has acknowledged too that 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 retaining wall does limit the sightlines. Um, I don't think that's really been in question, but the the severity of how that impacts the sightlines. Uh, and the application of the ASH TO standards is where we just had a slight disagreement. There are a couple of different things that factor into this, one is the speeds along Country Way. Uh, the the actual documented speeds from the data uh that were published in V A I's report. Show that the traffic is somewhere around thirty seven miles per hour. Even though the speed limit in this area is twenty five miles per hour, it's not very well signed, and I do believe that the applicant was attempting to try to. Maximize what they could do within the currently proposed driveway location. Uh, but understanding that there were limitations and constrictions of what that sightline would be. So in the most recent letter that we had reviewed and then commented on within the letter that I authored on February twentieth. Um, just want to reiterate for the board that um there was that opportunity, I think Mr. Grady and Mr. Thornton have both acknowledged that they're currently looking at it. For the potential to shift that curb cut to the north. Um, I do believe that that will help that sightline to more or less open that sightline looking to the south. But as we've also talked together too, Mr. Thornton and I about making sure that it doesn't. Uh, compromise that sightline to the north towards the cohesive town line. So the guidance that I provide is that um there is only one reference point to the vantage point in the ASH TO guidelines, which is fourteen and a half feet. Um, I do acknowledge the practicality of many users might creep in front of that, but the standard is a vantage point of fourteen and a half feet back from the edge of the travel line. Uh, or the travel way, which in this case with a narrow roadway width is the edge of the road. So with that vantage point. Uh, and I think with the potential to add those speed control measures. Uh, with better posting of the speed limit and the driver feedback signs, that may do some to drop that effective operating speed. In this section of Country Way. I do think it will require both uh to be successful. Um, and I I look forward to reviewing the updated plan and that updated sightline assessment once that shift is contemplated. So I I don't have any more than that to offer at this point, but you know, there's a combination of speed mitigation and or. Geometric changes in the driveway location and or even if it's not possible now, but the opportunity for the applicant to. Continue to seek to work with that property owner to the south, uh, if there's an opportunity to. Pull back that corner of that retaining wall, and I understand that they've made attempts to do that. Um, and if that is a possibility in the future, it would only um further maximize that view angle.
So is it possible for you to review where the proposed radars, speed signs would go? I mean, can you, can you just show the board roughly where where they would approximately go at this point in time based on? What you have as the current driveway, I mean, we know that you're going to be looking at changing driveway configuration.
Well, I I think, understanding that the town line is immediately on the north property line, um, I think. You know, the furthest away it could be and stay within the town of Situate would be, you know, just south of that town line. Uh, I think to create that theme, um, if it could be uh anywhere in that vicinity, I think would help. Uh, the limited research that I've read on the topic indicates that. Those devices are most effective in close proximity to the signs themselves, so with that being at the site's frontage. Uh, I think that would be one of the best spots, and then, you know, a couple hundred feet south of the driveway. Um, but understanding that the characteristics between the site and um say the MBTA station are very similar. I think that could be anywhere within that zone. Uh, where within several hundred feet of the driveway, it would influence that speed characteristic. Uh, the data does suggest that, um, or the research does suggest that. That type of device might mitigate the speed by ten to twenty percent. Um, so it still needs to be carefully observed, but it's not very well signed today, so I think with the combination of. The posted speed limit being very obvious, new retro reflective sign in the driver feedback sign, it will do some to mitigate that speed that's currently out there today. I think that it does warrant a detailed plan um. To be able to demonstrate, you know, because right now it's shown on the aerial that's up on the screen. Um, but to document what that sightline is, understanding that the corner of that wall. Uh, on the adjacent property is that true horizontal impact. To that sightline, so I think having that, a plan that shows that adjusted curb cut location. Uh, in order to meet. The stopping sight distance for an approaching vehicle that's based on a reasonably mitigated speed characteristic. I think is all part of the the um formula that. The applicant's team will have to be putting together to be able to satisfy our our prior comments on this topic.
Yeah, and if I if I could just follow up on that, um, the 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 graphic that's shown indicates uh. Potential locations, certainly on the on the northbound side of Country Way, there's there's not a lot of options. Um, because of the, you know, there's a number of curb cuts and and driveways. Uh, that are all kind of sprinkled all along between the 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 project driveway and uh locations to the south, so this. This location is um, it's in the vicinity of a of a commercial uh, a commercial building or or. Might have been a house originally, a residential uh building originally, but I think it's being used as a as a commercial building, so that would have. You know, that we're we're trying to find locations to install these signs that are um, that are less obtrusive. Uh, to the neighbors, and I'm I'm sure, you know. Um, this is, this is, putting this in front of a commercial building is less, uh, probably less of an issue than uh putting it in front of uh a residence. So that's, that's one location for for the sign, I I do think that, you know, it it would be. And any location in this area within five hundred feet of the driveway should be sufficient to to have an effect on. On the speed for uh for the vehicles on Country Way, both north and northbound and southbound.
I I agree with Mr. Thornton on that, that commentary.
Yeah, is there any questions, not any of that, I mean?
I I guess we're gonna take a crack at the application, see what we got.
So you'll have to present the new driveway to us.
Yes.
And then tell us, so, uh, and these are going to be those flash signs? Is this what you put up at Agent Country, Agent Barrage, it's that type of sign?
Yeah.
So what goes on this class, there's not a long time, right? How long do these signs, it's been talked about at town hall before, how long do these signs last? Uh, what's the battery, I mean, how do they run, um, you know, maintenance? So can you write a board on that, so so we so we know?
Yeah, 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 we'll we'll get that information typically there, you know, it's a, it's a solar setup, so they're self-contained. Um, and they're, you know, really a, you know, the electronics have improved pretty dramatically, so they're, they're really a set it and forget it kind of thing, but. But we'll, we'll get that information.
Alright, thank you very much.
But that is a responsibility, H O A. Who would take care?
Well, that's the question. It's not, it's, these are rentals, so there won't be an H O A, there'd be a. There'd be a property manager on this, so I would assume it would be landlord. I don't want to get over the first thing, not the best job, you can do it. But thank you for that information, if you're ready to give us a little bit modification.
Yes.
How long do you think it's going to take you to do that modification, um? You know, to to study it?
Um. If I look at that first, it's probably a week, and if I can eliminate those parking spaces. Uh, the accessible parking spaces, then I've got maneuverability in that, I don't see it being an issue. The issue is getting those accessible spaces um and providing. Uh, a meeting of regulations for less than two percent slope everywhere. So once I move that, now I I should be able to slide that entrance over.
You're talking about moving out from Building One?
Yes.
Why can't you put it up above from that parking lot?
I can move in there as well, yeah, there is an accessible route.
That would make sense if there's some type of a ramp. That. And you have, obviously, Building One is not ADA compliant, but if you put your two spaces near. That walkway, this with steps are. What? So that would enable whoever needs to access. You follow?
I do, I do not have an a direct accessible route to this area here, it would be. A roundabout.
It's a long, it's a, it's a long route, but the thing is.
It's closer than here.
That's right, but the thing is, on the one hand, you're saying that that it's not accessible, it's not ADA compliant. So if you put the two spaces above the upper parking lot, and then people can. Wander down, it's closer.
Upper parking lot, Venus.
Being right there.
Yep.
It can still be accessible to Building Two to Three, right?
Yes.
It it'd still be accessible to Building One too, it's just a, it's just a long.
No, I mean, ADA accessible.
Yes, yes.
Building One is not ADA accessible.
That's what I'm saying.
So if you put it. Uh, in that area of Building One, somebody who wanted to go to Building One, who sees it be closer. But it wouldn't be ADA accessible.
Correct.
But it wasn't before anyway.
Right, so that was my point.
But it, but it would be accessible to Two and Three, right?
Correct.
And you don't need to.
Without changing anything?
Right, and having it up at Three makes no sense at all.
That's right, so.
I have a related point, and it has to do with the affordability piece, will these, the subsidy for the affordable units, will that come from the voucher? I'm not sure.
It'll come from the voucher.
A voucher, like an agency is signing a voucher until later, because if if you're getting affordable units. I don't know for a fact, but you may want to look at whether the building itself has to be accessible in order for that. Building One subsidizes each.
No, it's not going to be.
It's not, but I mean, then then that may affect where you put your affordable units, because there could be conditions on subsidizing these units that. Because in theory, if it's through a voucher, that has to go to anybody of any physical capability. So that's, I I've seen projects get derailed at the last minute because that hadn't been thought of, so that's. That's gonna drive, I think, some of, what, the easiest solution might be that the affordable units aren't in Building One, but I just don't know if you can do that. Offhand.
No, you, yeah, yeah, it's up to the board, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have, we'll look into that, but.
But I mean, I mean.
No, no, no.
Whoever's subsidizing it, that could be an issue for that.
I think it's just recommended.
No, oh, absolutely, yeah.
If you need to move it, can you move it?
Yeah.
And you're going to Metro List, right?
Yeah.
I know, can you trust me with that, so? Alright, so other items on my list, we'll need your full list of um waivers that you think could be.
I may need a hand with that, because a couple of the waivers, Karen or Barbara and I were discussing today. Were kind of buried in the in the weeds, they weren't obvious to me, um, that waivers were necessary. Uh, for example, the one that we discussed, I believe, was a waiver on the painting of the facade. On Building One, which was a request of the Site Review Board, um, if you. Site Review Board, and everybody in this room wants the buildings to kind of flow and match, so. Um, leave it, leave it for now, we don't need a waiver, change the color, we need a waiver, and that, I. Just found that out today, and I've been looking at these regs for a while, so if we can work on.
I wasn't sure about, I I didn't know about that waiver.
Yeah. So there. Yeah, I I was under the impression that we were fine, you know, so.
We know you need the waiver for the affordable, for the, not submitting the affordable information. I think you're going to resolve the waiver on the parking not being five feet behind the building by moving those two handicap spots.
I think we were five feet behind though, but yeah, that's no longer there, great.
We need to know how much impervious area is in the front yard.
I did check that, uh, and I think, and I know we're compliant, but I will double check that to make sure we don't get a waiver on that.
Okay, um, the board will be requiring surety on this project. I just want the board to know that the rendering is witness leading, all these sidewalks on this property are vituminous concrete, they are not concrete sidewalks. Okay, um. Can you talk a little bit about trash truck movements?
Sure, I'll I'll provide some some turning uh.
I mean, just, it's, it seems that the trash truck is going to have to back up, and I just, the board needs to know that, I mean, they've done it before, but they just. They might not realize that the trash truck has to back out.
Sure, um, so trash pose in this location, that trash truck's gonna come in and turns front, front loader. Gonna uh load the trash, back out and go, um, we have a similar scenario here. So actually, the. Dumpsters are here, and this is, this is uh emergency turnaround, not to be parked in, so I believe what they'll do is they'll come in here. Back up. Load, back up and go.
They have to back out from that, between building one and two, all the way up?
Yes, I don't see another way to do that. Um. And I believe that's a fairly convenient location for, uh, residents of building two to utilize. Um, it's a nice straight shot, I don't think, obviously, they'll back up alarms, but I don't think it'll be a long duration.
Would trash, um, handling be able to be scheduled so it's not impeding pedestrian times?
I'm sure. So, you know, that's a.
You only have one trash truck. They have four or five communities.
Right, okay.
Yeah, every day. So the trash is, is both for building one and two in that locale?
I think the, uh, they can use any trash they want.
Right. All right, so I think the last big issue, um, is pedestrian circulation. Um, so as you know, uh, making a safety. Uh, you're still busy for the sidewalk, you know that. Um, so when it comes to some kind of resolution, how are you going to get your residents safely? You know, from most buildings to your center, so, uh, I'm not an engineer, and I know I'm something, but I don't know, give it to that, so, um. As you know, in Green Bush, we had funds that were created to sidewalk.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, in, in Green Bush, you know, we did projects, we were, which would money that could be to sidewalks in the Green Bush area. Karen, we had a conversation with D P W and town administrator, and, um, personally, I think they were rather short-sighted, that they do not want to put sidewalks in the center right now, well, that doesn't make any sense, that's spoken in their issues, so, I think that if, if we could come to some kind of agreement, and you did approach us one time before, with a money contribution, as to whether if they ever decide to put sidewalks, which they have to, I mean, there's no way around it, we're going to have to change their mind somehow.
And they, they don't have to resolve that until after the situation.
I know, but we know that, not three or five years, you know, three or five years forever. So, it's, uh, but it's on warrants, it's telling me you contribute a million dollars to design, and they can have that for a total of, as well. But we know that, so, the usual, I think, for us is that how do you get people safely across that, so, uh, Kevin, I think we have a conversation, maybe we do a lot of walkway at some point? Do walkway from in the back?
No, no, we don't have any control over, over the properties adjacent to us or anywhere, but, you know, Kevin and I, it's funny to talk about this, is how existing situation, people walk down the driveway and they, they take a right, and they, and they walk down like every other property owner on, on that street, but, but, but with that said, is, you know, this being site plan approved and what, I discussed with Karen, this you know, if, but the, the problem is that there, there isn't room for, there, there isn't room for sign uh, in front of the front of this property, but assuming we're looking at I think, I think you price that out, was, what was it, twenty, twenty four grand or something? Uh, we, we, we're willing to contribute back to some type of fund, so it finds to be aggregated, so when it comes with a solution that works, there, that's something that certainly.
Well, so, I, you know, so we, we plan for the long term, you know, that's supposed to be down jobs, we plan for twenty five, it's just not every single project, we, we, we've got in Green Bush, yes, government, your stock, which is my old boss, something like that, but that has to be done, we, we put money aside, so we could have a conversation about what are you specifically unwilling to create in that kind of a fund, so that we can better approach the D P W, town administrator, we need sidewalks up here. And as she says, it's not going to happen without S O R, so that point's our place, and then we will need it, you know?
Yeah, you're, you're right, and this is, you know, some, something along, along those lines, that's something we've heard, discussed in this conversation, this conversation, but, but particularly with the town studying this and doing this, whatever in the future, we don't want to, this is, in other words, the reason why we dropped a building, dropped a very large number of units, density, among other things, is the, the cost and expense of this, it says, if it's something in the neighborhood of twenty four grand, but, but again, we don't want to, we can't physically go the side.
No, we don't, we don't.
It's something on those lines, and we don't want to get into, because the town may decide, uh, you know, the town may decide that, I, I don't know what they're going to decide, you have the oldest road in the county here, so I, I, and, and again, I think you got I don't even know, you, you folks that, uh, are the commissioners on that, I don't even know with a, with a scenic road, what the rules are.
I think if you build a sidewalk here, to, I mean, we're obviously running to that pinch point that, that grass of town line, but eventually, look, you gotta bring sewer in here, I think the road needs to be straightened out, if you built a sidewalk, it'll probably get ripped out and realigned.
It's going to be a limited domain case.
It, it would never happen without the sewer being in the road.
No, yeah.
And it would just, it would never happen that way. So, you, you have this. Maybe suggestion, I don't know if this applies, and maybe it's sort of out there. But, one of the things that we have done in Green Bush, at the end of U T A four in, was basically a walking path with walkers that went from the back of fifty, fifty countryway down to the sidewalk transition. Is there some way, could there be a meeting of the minds, that some type of a walkway, gravel, whatever, would be put from the corner of here, in back of Lincoln Park, to the driveway, and then walk down the driveway on the sidewalk?
But, but that's up to, because what you're running is a different thing, and it's a, it's a different authority.
But you know what, nothing is.
I know, I know that, but what I'm saying is, and, and we can't, we, we've explored, explored everything, and again, I don't need to in the woods, in the, in the south, uh, very thorough job on this, but I'm, I'm just, I'm reticent to do anything which has to do with a third party, which we have no control, we're already told, the property next to it, it's, you know, established type environment that the state people need, but they know, they won't, so, everything we've asked us to, we have done that, but I don't, we can't agree to anything, yeah, without our people.
And, and I, and I think, one of you, so you, you hear us as well, obviously, we cannot, we can put sidewalks, we're not allowed to do that, it's not enough for people, you're perking to do that, that is, that is the challenge of us, to do that, uh, but we need to, we still, that, that, that's still an issue for us, well. So personally, I would never expect a sidewalk that would be insisted building, I just remind. I would think everybody coming out of this, going to the right, so we need the sidewalk, that's my personal opinion, that doesn't do with anybody else's. But I, I was looking at the drawing, uh, I don't know who owes the property, it's back of eight or nine. Is that our property? Do you know what?
I don't.
It's the housing part, that's what I'm talking about, it's the housing. Yes, they do. Something's on, you know, in your engagement history, you know, I hope for. Next door. And you said.
Here?
Yes. So if you watch this, you can think something we have by, so that's, that's not my cat's ass. The transition issue is, you come up with, and that's some kind of, this is going to do with this new house, then affordable housing, yeah, if somebody, they can get across there, it would be in this area, who cares? And I mean, I, I think, there's always a way for it to resolve, we have to kind of come by some legal device, somehow have people, what is it, what is C? I, I don't know, which would open to suggestions. Yeah, I mean, I think that you, we may be looking to, for some type of monetary contribution, um, based on, you know, real, real numbers. Um, you know, and D P W's runs some numbers, that, you know, some, some blocks cost, you know, four hundred seventy dollars a linear foot, some cost five hundred twenty dollars a linear foot. I think we're, we're looking for something, because the planning board would be short-sighted. I mean, they're charged with planning for the area, and I think they'd be short-sighted if we let a project go, I understand you can't, you, you have no control to get a sidewalk right now, but I mean, I think some type of monetary contribution. Was it to cover better than any?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying, right, you know, contribution, like I said, it's hundreds of thousands, you know, it's unusual.
You give us a number, what, what, what?
Yeah, I, I said that, Kevin, from, from the, from the edge of the, uh, pa- parking lot onto the, uh, Lincoln Park thing, how far is that?
What are we talking about?
Yeah, like right there, ten, ten feet? Yeah, yeah, somewhere between ten and fifteen feet. Yeah, but I, I, I could, I could, I could already hear, without even asking the question.
Oh, that's a liability, you know, we don't want, we don't want people walking through uh, this, and, and people sleep late here, so, uh, we don't want people walking in our bushes.
I know.
So it's, it's all.
So the other issue is, is that, you know, um, if there's a monetary contribution, we need to verify, which we're going to ask anybody else who wants to, to say that.
Yeah, there's a difference off, in some specific permanent project.
I know.
Or it has a right, this is, this is exactly where nobody, everyone else can be. It's, can you build this or can you not build this? The answer is, you can't build this, then, I don't know what we've been doing here last.
What, 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 so we, we're coming here with positive player views, that we want to build, but trying to, to make some kind of connection that, that we can make this really happen, because you know that we can, we need to make sure that we have safety for people, that's our first interest, and we plan for the long term, you know, so.
I know, this is a problem with the town, it's a longstanding problem, and I, I, we've already, you've already said, and I understand, it's not trying to be, uh, you know, uh, this isn't bores. Is to say, you know, if you need twenty five grand towards this, that's something, if it didn't, the affordability of construction of project, that we can do that. But if it's, if it's fifty grand, seventy five grand, then that, then that becomes a problem.
No, we're not talking, I have a, not talking, you know, about that. So, uh, you know, you, you give us a number, I have a number in my mind, and they'll be combined, and I try to be, yeah, but we can.
Yeah, but, 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 that doesn't, this, this is, you know, gold, is, you know, I can build something with, uh, you know, uh, that's gold. It, it, and, and it does, it, it doesn't matter, what I'm saying, I'm just saying, let's, let's talk about it right now, let's say twenty five grand, twenty five grand to this, or, or no.
Well, I tell you, it, it, it works, my, my number was a little higher, but twenty five works for me. Uh, but it's, it's up to the board, again, you should know how it works, is that.
I, I understand.
Something is.
Yeah, but, but I like this, I, I don't want this to be
I just don't want the project.
Doing everything else.
It's not going to hold the project up.
Yeah, because among other things, among other things, you know, you can frame it together. Our engineers are struggling as to why you have any granite curves. Go, yeah, I know that, but what I'm saying is, all these.
No, it's a subdivision standard, you, you, most places on the entries have granite curves, I mean, that's, that's a standard, that's a standard thing in the town.
Well, what you mean by struggling is I, I don't really have a place to look that up, it's, it's not a subdivision, so it's not, I'm not in the subdivision control, I'm in site plan. And I must, and then, a year in, I get a memo from D P W, it says, we want granite curving, and we want concrete sidewalks with handicap ramps.
You know, some of it's a constructability standard, how do you construct the, the, how do you construct the ramp with, you know, flush, flush, et cetera, so some, that's, that's some of what is going on.
Yeah, but what, I understand what you're saying, Karen, but do you want to get a consensus on what the number is, and if we have this, then, then that's inside, and if the money goes into the account, and it's not used by the town for five, ten, twenty years, and, you know, that, that's the town, it's tough for the town residents to
Correct.
To move that.
I, I agree with you, I, I agree with you. So if we can make an agreement that you would offer us twenty five thousand dollars for this, we could take this, we can settle this right now?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, done.
Done.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go back and revisit building one, can you tell us exactly what you want to do with building one?
Make it free.
Oh, yeah, how could we know what was taken? So you want, you want to be signed, right? Should I look like the other?
Yeah, because that's what the designer view and all this, that's, again, we keep talking about this, uh, legal issue there.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're trying, we're, we're trying to, I want to try to resolve an issue so that we can get you
Fine.
A letter, so that, you know, we're trying to resolve issues to try to solve a pro- problems.
Yeah, just, it, in it, and you give, give the explanation on this, and my partner Jeff probably built this much more better than I can, and I've seen Mr. Bold's response to, response is, good. We're not altering this building, but, but the interesting thing is, when, when you isolate and you start looking at, at things, it's like, when, when you look at, we go right back to section seven fifty, uh, you know, applicability. In other words, this doesn't exist when you build a construction, right? Uh, you know, this isn't, goal is, if, if you're taking a building and you're modifying it and all this, we're not, we're putting a facade on this to try to make this look the same, so we don't consider that, you know, and, that the language they had, a feature which is not involved a change in the design material color, well, it isn't a color, but one of the things we want is on the sec- section seven, uh, seven fifty fifty, you know, a waiver for that, it's as simple as that, and, and again, the applicability, these things, these things are guidelines, and this is with, in, uh, Patty, I know you, and Karen, and all these, this is what the designer review committee, who is the subcommittee, uh, wants us to do, and, you know, and so, the reason we want this is, uh, what they're asking for, this is an existing building, in other words, we're not looking to modify what this looks like or anything else.
So we, we, we know that, so I think that what happened, and this is for anybody else who knows, that, um, Mr. Delisi wrote, well, I changed the vocal. I don't think Mr. Delisi listened to, uh, when you were telling, no, we know you were going to give the special permit, so I think that this was kind of a checklist to get.
Yeah, but we don't want a special.
We're not, but we know that, but we told you that that was a waiver that we wanted to give.
Yeah, so, so if, if there's a waiver, then that's fine, just to.
It's not a waiver, it is not, the, the bylaw deliberately specifically says special permit. So that's why we're trying to figure out exactly what they're going to do to the building, and then town council is going to make a determination, what's required.
But, Karen's taking it further than this, you can waive that provision. And, and the, the intent of this, if, to interpret this otherwise means that every existing building you tear down. That was one of the original things down in Green Bush was, in the, under prior was, the, the way this was written, and then, and then the whole bylaw was shelved for years, someone who drafted it, was to tear down buildings, this is an existing building where you're changing the facade as the designer review committee in this, to make it look prettier, we're not altering this, we're not cutting this, we're not moving this, because the other, the, the, the net, the reality of the result is otherwise, you start tearing down buildings. Is in, 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 that's what you have, so this is exactly what the waiver provision, what the bylaw says, is that you can waive anything other than building height.
All right, town council. This is why town council, here, town council, so you want to reside the building, to make it look like the new buildings, and that's all you're going to do? Okay, that, that, they, they will take that under advisement, and we'll, we'll get something, and write in, right, shortly.
Just, this, this is more for my benefit than Oh, okay, but, but, but the point, the point I'm getting a little mystified, is, because I'm always leery of finding special permits, and anyhow, this, forty eight, section seven, very clear, it's the authority is, the building commission makes a decision, if someone doesn't like his decision, you go to the town board, yes.
Right, I've been asked to provide a.
Oh, I, I, I understand, and so I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to stifle you.
I get it, and I.
Free things, but what I'm saying is, if some junker, can I say, you know, we, we follow them, we chat them, and stay far, or what, what, what is it that we're doing? I don't as, as far as that. And what I'm saying is it's a protocol, I guess, on any project, because I don't wanna be seen as someone who's trying to undermine zone enforcement.
So are you guys gonna pay to reside yourself, which is maybe not, not that other part of the stuff, right?
We're excited, so it matches all.
Are you gonna replace the windows?
Uh, a lot of them have already been replaced and the, do your process, um, ten minutes.
All right, so that question is answered.
Yeah, the question is, yeah, we can, we can move on, keep on that.
May I just ask one more about building one? That building does not have air conditioning, are you? And you're not going to put in air conditioning?
Not renovating.
Not renovating it, not putting in splits, not doing anything? Okay.
Decon.
Because we don't want, we fear, we fear falling into, into the, uh, the abyss here. So it's an unfortunate result, but it's the way the bylaws.
On the other issue, like, if, if you look at the long view of this, is the economy is gonna push you to do something to that building at some point?
It is.
So, and that's not, that's enough for us to do right now, so.
Yeah, and, and then, and then when you get to that, maybe get to that permission, you're back, you're back for modification in, in that, in a, in a finding with the DPA.
So like I said, so that's, that's, they're not here for renovations, so they just, like I said, decon, no check here, there, right? Could you look here? Or you could be here. I wanna look here, or there's no, you gotta be here, then you're, so they'll have to figure that out, they always have to. Okay, Karen, next.
I think that's all my issues. I, I still don't see, I have roof pitches on everything. I think it would be nice to have one final set of architecturals, um, but, you know.
They, they are.
Um, then could you actually email me? Cause I, I've been looking for them. For building two.
Building two, the roof plan shows all.
All right, I'll look, I'll look again.
Second, A one, two, I, I responded to that in my letter, they haven't received yet.
Okay.
Give you a direction on where that is.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any questions? Yeah? Okay, so there are all sorts of questions in the home case, we several, and I got your name and your address, please.
Good evening, I'm John the Wall, four thirty-one South Main and capacity in the butter. I'm just surprised that we're backing off of, of connecting to the, uh, drain, uh, just over the border. Having lived there for thirty years, when there are heavy rains and usually more frequently ones, uh, a lot of that water comes rushing down both our driveway and the property, uh, on the other side. It goes downward by Lincoln, uh, and into the pond and into the. The creek or whatever, so I'm just concerned about the fact that we're back here waiting for that.
If, if it doesn't work, they'll have to come back.
I didn't hear that.
Okay, but if it doesn't work, you have to come back.
All right.
But did you also hear that they're not increasing the rate or volume of runoff leaving the site? So therefore, that, that's a major criteria in the design of a stormwater system. We can't just ask them to fix a drain because we feel like asking them to fix.
Well, I understand that, but I think in our conversation before, a couple of people who live in that area commented that already it's efficient, uh, as it is, and, uh, in order to, um, accommodate all of the runoff, we thought that there was an agreement to, uh, hook into that, to that drain, so.
Well, what I heard was, from what Kevin said, was that, um, the post-construction flows are less than what exists today. So certainly shouldn't make it any worse. Should at some level have some.
Well, since it's an agreement to look at it afterwards, that, that's great.
That's a word.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, hi, Kathleen DeGeordi, four twenty-nine South Main Street, capacity, and, and butter. I did want to, um, sort of, you know, think back on what John Paul just mentioned. Um, TC's most recent letter to the board, the board sixteen twenty twenty-four, um, comment ninety-three, this is on page four. TC, um, was commenting about the discussion with the DPW and how they wanted, they found this to be very critical. That, uh, they said they understand that the applicant is working with DPW to address, uh, that drainage issue right there. Um, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, but it says TC views this as a critical issue that must be resolved. And Mr. Ellison's not here tonight, so I don't.
Yeah, we could give somebody.
Oh, so maybe TC can, can address whether or not this is still a critical issue, or you think it's gonna be solved and, um, if, you know, what, what your thoughts are, please.
Did you hear that question?
Yes, uh, through you, Madam Chair, um, just to clarify, uh, our comment number ninety-three, uh, in Peter's letter from last week did confirm, and I think, uh, Mr. Grady acknowledged it too, that, you know, optimally, there, there would be a connection from, uh, the onsite piping to a basin like that to try to connect it underground. I think that, that still remains, you know, the optimal condition. Um, we do acknowledge the fact that they are, uh, reducing and or maintaining, but certainly not exacerbating any of the flows at that level. You know, I think with the, the board's conversation about sidewalks, understanding that, that is an overland flow that would then go into the town's catch basin. If there were any future desires for a sidewalk that went along the entire frontage that the town might construct, that would partially compromise the ability to get the overland flow to that basin. So I think, um, Madam Chair, you mentioned something that if the drainage pattern doesn't work, that there might be a condition, I'm gathering from your comment, that uh, they might have to come back. So I think that would be prudent, um, and, um, but again, the optimal type of situation would be to connect with pipes underground so that we don't have overland flow that then, looks at the capacity of that orifice, you know, that catch basin, to receive the water because it's already coming in underground. So that, that's our opinion, um, but understanding that the board's already had an extensive dialogue on the topic, uh, DPW chiming in, and ultimately, uh, DPW maintains the system within the road. Um, and if it's desired not to, uh, intercept it or rebuild it in that, um, location, then, uh, that's, that's under their purview.
Thank you. Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Um, I have some additional comments. Um, I also want to make a general comment, um, when Mr. Grady's, uh, showing you all, um, where he's suggesting changes. We can't see that when we're here, this is facing you all, and so maybe then, you know. You know, um, I also wanted to talk about this, uh, the driver feedback signs, the traffic driver feedback signs, which will flash and I assume it's being slow or, um, whatever. I mean, obviously we'd want people to slow down. I mean, it's a, it's, we live right there, right next door on Plaza. But, you know, there's a couple of things about that, uh, one being is, uh, you know, we don't want it, you know, we walk about this property because we commute every day, so there's a number of people coming across the side, and they're currently coming across the street there, and walk across this property. So to the extent that that radar sign's kind of big or in the way, we hope it doesn't intrude on the pedestrian passage, uh, in front of this site. Um, the other, uh, comment I want to make is it's gonna be flashing, and we're definitely gonna see if there are more hazards to go with water. So we hope to be mindful of the proximity of this to the residents' house. The other thing I did want to mention, and this is a request, um, you can read the app, they will refer. Um, the, there are, smoking that line of sight, there are three, it looks like three bushes based on the landscape that are at the northeast form of the site by the stone wall. And by, you know, by where capacity is that meets. And those bushes are generally overgrown. And I think the very first letter I wrote to this board that raised this issue, because we can't see coming down our driveway when those bushes are overcome and when they're seized. And, um, there's, there's thorn bushes, um, for the landscaping plan that are supposed to be, and I really sincerely believe they are invasive species. Those bushes weigh shit because they're thorny and they're out of control. They also impede on the pedestrian roadway right there. In fact, I think that's even shown in all of the plans that's in the grid. So I request those, those either moved and replaced with something more appropriate for the fundamental property right there, um, rather than something that grows to a height that ends up being, um, more neighboring property owners, such as a besieged traffic coming out.
We will take that up with fire.
Yeah, just, just, I've already discussed that.
Okay.
Is, is, you know, in, uh, landscaping design would make that. Uh, we'll chainsaw the three bushes down and put three things that are awards, that, Karen, that's, you know, agreeable to pass that. So we'll, they'll take care of that.
It will, it will definitely help.
Okay.
Some more, it's helpful to ask for landscaping. The other thing I wanted to mention is there's a stone wall in front of the property. I, how much room is between that, between these, new, the same wall and the, the street? Because people kind of walk there and hopefully have enough room. Um, you know, because there's basically a slant where the street meets, meets the lawn, and, you know, people trip there. In fact, my husband saw us on a trip there the other day. So, um, I don't know, you know, just want to be mindful of that. There's real pedestrians, where the, where the stone wall is placed, because.
Yeah, this, this, the stone walls, I, I don't have a scale plan, but it's two or three feet onto our property behind the right of way line. And there's a grass strip between the edge of pavement and the right of way line, it's at least five feet. So I think there's at least eight feet there between that wall in front. So I don't think it's gonna impede where people walk down. I just walked there today. I went and checked out that catch basin and walked down that same worn path. I think it'll be fine.
Okay, we'll check all that, that's all, that's gonna be not comments.
Okay, and, and, you know, just in general speaking, in whatever conditions or political conditions, to make sure that all of the landscaping is maintained and, like, all of that managed, maintained, overgrown. Also, uh, there's, you know, the ADA pathway that may not be seen exactly.
It's not in the back.
Right, but there is one along the north property, right, by, right next to our property. Is that necessary still? Um, I know they're taking the ramp out. You know, building one is an ADA compliant.
Well, that's part of our discussion, so can we go over to your step here?
Okay, so, you know, um, I'm wondering, um. That's all I have.
Can you point out the, the shrubs that you're talking about that are coming out? Just looking at the landscaping land, instead of coming out, I don't see it.
Okay, there's actually.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking to the.
I believe she's talking in this area here. Um, we're trying to retain a couple of large trees that are there. Uh, we can cut any under story. Um, it's probably beyond the detail of what we're.
It doesn't show.
Right, we have some pictures and some of the photos that we have.
No, I'm just asking whether it was, you know, addressed here somewhere.
I think we could provide a condition to remove invasive shrubs on the property. Um, because you are starting to do that, because you're not supposed to have invasives in Massachusetts anymore.
New evidence.
New evidence. It's not gonna be selling.
No, we're not supposed to sell.
And, no, right, go on.
No, we put on old ones.
So no more burning bushes?
No more burning bushes, no. It's too bad.
What would Moses?
So, well, so when he said new invasives, it reminded me too, that there are, I mean, I'll show you, I'll send you a picture. Um, there's, like, maybe this will be removed when, you know, some stuff, and I don't know. I don't want trees removed, but there's a whole, like, thinking of ridiculous stuff going on between the two property lines that.
Karen, I wonder if I can. You can rest assured, this is gonna be about a city page decision, so I have to.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Take a nap before we come.
And I have to read it.
You're welcome. Any other questions, audience, again, if you're living up, no, we're all right, so, on yes, Matt.
Hi, I'm Elise Gold, you're thirty-eight, what kind of? And, um, I didn't hear any plan for, um, children standing in front of the property waiting for the bus. And, um, if we are gonna put a sidewalk in front of building number one, where are those children going to wait safely? And I do have to tell you, as far as having little signs saying you're going too fast or whatever, my neighbor almost got accosted by a man who was doing probably forty-five down Water Highlandian. And people are going up and down Water Highlandian at ungodly speeds. We have twenty-six children in the area. And I just must say that, you know, I'm glad everybody's thinking about little signs, but we really have to do more than that.
We can afford my issue, right?
So it's two things, there are two things. One, where are the children going to stand? Um, this is the family project. Um, where are they gonna stand to pick up the bus and how are they gonna be safe? Thank you.
And Broderick, or two more, kind of, true, uh, to Elise's point, where is the bus gonna turn around? Bus comes, no buses can go over the Water Highlandian Bridge. Children currently on Water Highlandian Road are going down to Anna Road at the corner. There's, if you can't go over the bridge, they're coming from North Sitchuit, they're picking you up at this property. Where are they gonna turn around?
They're gone. What they're doing at this moment in time, the bus comes down Country Way, takes a left onto Henry Turner Bailey Road, takes a right onto three A, takes a right onto Beachwood, takes a right onto Selby. And then comes back, who holds it, and picks up on Country Way.
We research sort of like a ride to Hamer.
Can you, can they think about a bus stop? I mean, how, can you try to address how, how the kids are going to wait safely for the bus? I mean, we don't, we don't have to answer it tonight, but maybe you'll think about.
It seems like there's a transport for the ride. There's, there's a walkway right here where you can get in line and the bus can stop right in front of the entrance. It's, uh, except, it's a possible route.
I don't know, when I was a kid, they, they, they pulled it to the end of Water Highlandian Road, turned around there. Just grabbing your fingers, I'm sure they can still hear.
Well, there's a condo there, and Tom has this, and it says private driveway, no turnaround, because the last.
On the other side, on the other side, there's the law, so. Okay.
All right, so.
It's all by the condos.
Is it? Time to summarize?
Yes. Double eyes, please. I have no.
All right, so hopefully we can get all this, um, Metro West Collaborative will be the monitoring agent, there's gonna be five important witnesses, they're going to show us where they are located. They will accept as conditions all the DRC recommendations. They will accept the DPW recommendations, um, for the, for the entrance memo. Um, they're going overland for the drainage in the corner and, um, so they don't have to do anything on that. It already meets rate and volume. We're not requesting any special permit. They're going to get us a list of waivers. Handrails are gonna be added to the plans. They'll look at roof drains. They'll look at pipe connections to manholes, um, they'll look at snow storage, um. They are willing to accept a condition that a detailed construction sequence prior to the start of construction. Um, there is one main accessible route, they're taking out the ramp. There are going to be two easy spaces for the site. They're going to look to move the driveway to the north, uh, approximately ten feet. And they'll be reviewing sightlines and report back to us at the next meeting. Um, they will be, um.
Including the addition. Speed signs.
Right, and the speed signs. Right, they go together and so, um, they will. Well, we could, we could condition it that property man, the management responsible for maintenance.
That's what I'm assuming, assuming our agreement.
So, uh, So um. They will, they have agreed to provide twenty five thousand dollars for a walk for a fund that we will write a condition for. Building one is just reciting the building. We'll get an opinion on that. Um. We'll. We'll probably have a condition to um remove have remove invasive shrubs. Um. And they have identified a bus stop on the plan. They think a sidewalk in front that could be a potential bus stop for for the children. That's what I had on my.
I see, I have to have title scripts.
Oh, insurance. They they agree, they they will do surety um and put that tactile. They have the accessible route comes with, you have to do the tactile warning scripts and and on. And if if the accessible route has to be revamped a little bit because of the change in the driveway, then we'll do that. We'll get it reviewed again by the building commissioner and um they'll add all that they need to to the plan.
Well, I think there's supposed to be um. Try to use the letter, right? Um but there were things like handrails.
Yeah.
Uh roof drain.
Yeah.
Pipe coverage.
Yeah.
And seeing around the fence or those kind of things, but I assuming they're going to be, you've already written the letter.
Right, yeah, I just have to implement it.
And verification of twenty five, no more than twenty five percent in person, right there. I think that's all.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, so we're kind of um in a position where I think if they revise the plans. Our engineer is going to need two weeks to review it. Um I was looking at a continuance until March twenty eighth at seven o'clock. And it's going to be very tight on their end, but I think the applicant is motivated to get uh the project through to completion. So will those will those timeframes work for you?
When is the uh when are you to submit by? Two weeks ahead?
No, no, my I have to have everything. All right, the meeting's the twenty eighth. I have to get all comments back by the twenty first. T E C needs two weeks.
Yeah.
So you have to submit by March seventh.
Okay.
You're almost there, Mr. Prey.
Yes.
Is that going to be doable?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm able to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, site planning administrative review and special permit for three multifamily buildings and stormwater permit in Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Situate Village District, Outer Village, V C N, N S V, O B until March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, seven P M, and continue the time for action for final with the town clerk until April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
The second.
Second.
Oh, babe.
Thank you very much. Thank you. More rich. We're going to start now.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, go to twenty second. Yeah.
Be very.
Wait, why what?
Yeah.
What was?
No. No, you're obviously.
We've been having discussions.
No.
What?
No, that's.
Okay. Just.
I will accept that. So most of you.
This should be applying for.
It should be at town hall. Um the extension of the adjustment plate is sixty one and driftway.
Um yeah, we the endorsement deadline for sixty one and driftway comes on March sixth, which doesn't make the next meeting. We were shooting for this, but due to vacations, it just did nothing, so I have a motion to extend it uh for sixty days. Hopefully, hopefully it is on our next meeting.
I'm able to accept the applicant's request to continue time for new site planning administrative review and special permit for mixed use building and stormwater permit in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Green Bush Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village Subdistrict, V C N, T V G, N D T V at sixty one and driftway for an additional sixty days, May three, twenty twenty four, which is beyond the ninety days after the appeal period ended.
So that's.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Hey, who are you? Nice to see you, Mr. Carey.
Hello.
No business, no business, correspondent administrator. Are you on the liaison?
I I am, but we meet on Thursday next.
We know that, but that's what we insult sometimes, right? I don't trust people with that. Um so we're going to vote the reports to town meeting.
All right, so I um sent out the reports to town meeting. Um you want to do the easy one first? I forgot to print copies today.
Want me to read them?
I was I was so I was so busy working um.
Sorry.
Other decisions.
Other stuff that I forgot to.
That's okay.
I forgot to print it. I apologize.
In all the. No, I.
All right. This is um Karen, you can really get the boards just because they're up there.
I'll wait a minute.
We're doing articles.
Wireless.
Yeah. Easy one first, you said, once you have seventeen. The planning board um hereby reports and reports, met general was chapter forty A, a public hearing itself on this article on January eleventh, twenty twenty four, and closed on train night. February twenty two, twenty twenty four, work unanimously to support passage to the article at the April eighth, twenty twenty four annual town meeting. The changes to this article allow clarifications to the existing wireless communication antennas on utility homes following. Clarification is proposed to show that a special permit from the planning board that meets all requirements on a major site plan review is needed. This clarifies the discrepancy in the language where a special permit is talked about in one sentence and a site plan review in the next. A special permit is needed for these antennas. The planning board supports this article. This article requires a two thirds quote. Okay, do we need that?
This we should be that the special permit is needed for the sighting of these antennas. This is as opposed to these antennas.
I'm going to pick it up and I'll just, that's it.
I'll just try it. Just try it.
Why this should be just knowing this special permission.
And and if you want to change the language, just mark it up. I mean, um.
So the most said special from this media for these.
For the sighting of these antennas.
Well, it's not just the sighting. It's it's the whole antenna that is special permit, you know, because you could you have standards for um. You know, what it looks like and all that kind of stuff.
It's the whole.
It's the whole antenna. It's not just the sighting.
Okay.
Do you need, was that an option you had to approve it or? Um, no, if everyone's.
It's looking good.
We're good.
We're good.
We're good.
I didn't. It is.
You should jump with that.
If you change the wording on this or no?
Why not?
Okay. All right, this is article sixteen, man zoning map and bylaw sections, section three A, M B T A communities compliance. The planning board revised reports that in reports with master was chapter forty A, a public hearing itself on this article on January eleven, twenty four, and closed on the same night on February twenty two, twenty twenty four. The board voted unanimously to support passage of the article in April eighth, twenty twenty four annual town meeting. The changes in this article allow the town of Situate to comply with master general was chapter forty A, section three A of the zoning act for multifamily zoning as upright in M B T A communities. Changes include, but are not limited to replacing D H C D with E O H L C throughout the bylaw and definitions related to section three A, M B T A communities, adding two mandatory mixed use districts, clarifying the pedestrian frontage zone, revising by right densities from twelve to fifteen in three reembarked subdistricts, allowing ten percent affordable housing in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, V C N, for by right projects only, and eliminating commercial parking in the V C N mixed use district for by right developments only. The town desires to be a compliant M B T A community to ensure it has the right to apply for funds under multiple grant programs. The zoning changes are minor in nature as the town previously approved multifamily and mixed use development zoning in V C N twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. The planning board supports this article as free joke. Done.
Okay, now we can minutes and whatever.
No, I forgot to put the.
We forgot to put that stuff.
And and all that rest of that stuff?
Yeah. I forgot to do that.
That's okay.
All right, ladies on reports.
So I am the liaison of the bylaw review committee, which is just newly resurrected from the yes, that's not going to focus yet. Um the bylaw review committee is going to act kind of like advisory, kind of like court of light, and they're really a lot of supportive or not supportive. Uh they had a lot to say about zoning. And I told them that we have public hearings and public meetings and they need to show up there. I don't know about do anything afterwards because they haven't. So I was asked to tell them when those meetings are going to be. Okay, so I can be there. Um and then they they want to, they don't have enough people on that committees. Problem is, it's implied to seven, it's true, it's really. It's really, so hopefully maybe this will get word out to somebody, but it's I I they have to go through the bylaws soon. Okay, do what you need to shine. This is how I feel. Next, you'll be I went.
Okay. I went to um community preservation and we had this this guy, Mike Mappen, from Noble C P C. Gave us some information on trying to put together a plan, not a plan, but a have people weigh in on what they would like to see C P C do. Okay, and it has to do with open space, affordable housing, historic ideas, so. Oh, yeah, of course we do it. At any rate, that was that, so take that as advisement. And from there we went to, we withdrew Bates parking, rescinded items and inserted parking. So we added to the rescind list eighty nine thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars and sixty cents and put that in twenty nine thousand nine hundred twenty eight dollars and twelve cents. That had to do with Bates parking and Crosby and Bates.
Oh, I hear you.
Oh, yeah. And then we had a discussion with a joint and Y car Situate salt marsh distribution initiative, S S N S I, that we have something like sixty hundred marshes, acres of marsh that need to be
protected.
Protected. So um it was spelled from us.
I'll show you.
And also dumping and stuff like that. So conservation, they're driving conservation crazy. I don't know, but at any rate, it is it is open space. And it is necessary. We had a piece in the Globe last weekend about how important marshes are.
We're just the one who goes, oh, it needs to.
Right, by.
Right, by is what the desert.
Well, that's not an issue.
There's an issue.
But how do you do it?
And all it takes is money.
Not that I want to buy all the time. I can barely see it. It's.
Is that is that a conservation issue? Is that a basic issue?
That's not our issue.
It's not our issue.
Not what it's.
It's not our issue.
I just want.
Some people own some of those.
And they should be maintaining them.
It should be. It's they don't have. I have clients that sold them. They they didn't do, they weren't maintaining them, but the people that own the other pack didn't want them taken down. So I don't think people, I wasn't aware of my, I have to talk to my client, so I'm the end man, so.
A lot of people awareness, they're pretty bad.
Okay, so I most of the brought tomorrow.
That's not our issue.
That's very. I'm just telling you what we're on.
Yeah, we have a very well just um. See it once.
Yeah, the beach association.
We had a fight down on that club which has a lot of people. But that's what we tell.
Well, we're um told where this built those five duplexes on Hadley Road. That was a big dump in the area. They had stoves in there, refrigerators and all kinds. Oh, seriously, it was absolutely unbelievable. And I heard stuff that had been dumped in.
Let's dump out a lot of quarrel. Yes, we can't, we can't decide this one. Don't start building them.
We should never catch them. And then um I went to traffic for some regulations, which you can be good on, yeah. And the only thing that was on was historical society trustees would like to propose the addition of a crosswalk on the country land, record across from the G A mall. So um that was taken under advisement. That's basically it.
Yes.
Busy week.
All along. Do you have anything?
I was just going to say, like, flight committee knows substantially some of the stuff that I mentioned, but um they're looking at that potential routes to town for for bike paths and things like that to make it more accessible. Um and I think they're trying to find ways to use kind of a C P C money to get funding to do that. Uh so I don't think we ever have much that where's the board itself or planning is in the C P C running on.
Yeah.
But just mention that I'd ask at the next meeting so I could report back to the flight committee.
We can't get sidewalks.
Right, right, right. So so are they trying to get like heated bike lanes? Or I think look at, yes, I think heated bike lanes, uh I think they want to start with sort of lining the path along driftway better.
I suppose they set one.
Or this that's where they that's where they should start, but then potentially work. I think they're thinking of routes like um so something from North Situate all the way down to like all the way down Ganet. And then essentially connecting down Hadley. Uh and then from our so the harbor and then from the harbor to up direction of Green Bush and then potentially some access to the town. Like schools and the rec apartment, things like that, just at least that they're marking better where people are to post by that would vary this.
It's interesting because if nobody ever put the sidewalk, if you want to treat it like everybody was praising, it's used so much.
I know.
You don't even know this there. People are crazy about this.
Yeah. Yeah, same thing on the driftway.
Yeah, oh, we can't not have a sidewalk there. You don't go by there with your eyes.
But one's not used. But one's not used.
What?
You're right. No, I drive down that road every time I go to work, go back. I've never seen anyone out of.
Bye.
Bye. I get on it and um. I get on it and.
They're going to show it to you.
I shouldn't say.
You can take that one down.
Just could never put a bike on there.
Yeah.
No, I thought we could appropriate money at a town meeting to these.
And sidewalk down to uh Green Bush. I thought we had done that.
It goes to Green Bush.
It goes to Green Bush.
That new sidewalk is in front of you, we go and all the rest of that, all been done.
All been done.
Yeah.
Hmm.
It goes all the way down there. Because there are there are meal boxes in the eleven. You can't push a baby carriage up there, but that's okay because it's not really a sidewalk. It's a trailer and that's hardly got a truck. Right?
Right.
So.
It's not on Countryway.
It is.
It connects.
All right.
There's a full sidewalk from North Situate through Green Bush down to 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 driftway.
Oh, thanks. So that's yeah, that's there. Okay, well, okay, that's now that is not used as much as something else. This is not why you're not pushing a baby carriage. You have to get off the sidewalk and one should get back on the sidewalk.
Not going in the street.
Well, we should know why that really is too old to use a baby.
Sure.
That could get to.
Put the door.
All right, so.
Country really was developed.
No.
All right, so we remain very busy. Next time, we have a common driveway and a stormwater permit. We may have endorsement for 61 Driftway. I don't think I can squeeze the tennis courts in for next time. I just don't think that they are, they're being, I won't have a hearing.
You're not ready.
So, I mean, but then you, the meeting at the end of March is gonna be a long meeting because we'll have eight seventeen and we're gonna have the tennis courts. Tennis courts have a, tennis courts is a stormwater permit, but requires public hearing because the amount of disturbance. I suppose so.
That's one break.
March 28th. That'll be a long meeting. Next. Oh, and I think I, I think we have an accessory dwelling on that night to start. So we've been very busy.
We have a meeting on the 14th.
We would like to not have a meeting on the 14th. No, the 11th. If town meeting is on the 8th, that's the Monday. Right.
No, I'm talking March.
March. Yes, we do.
I'll be in. So I don't know if we need to form.
This is not a special permit. The common, the common driveway is not a special permit.
So.
We're hearing this on the 28th before not till April.
No, we're hearing that on March 28th. This decision has to be filed with the town of Corvina.
You need to do it with.
Sorry. I need to make sure that it's applied and uh, put it straight up.
We can't let it go, let it go. Also, to what it, it seems to be said that there are two open positions.
Yes.
On the land board, an alternate and then.
They're gonna, they're gonna mention something, Jim is gonna mention something in his report next week. Kathy Gardner told me they're all the, all the positions that haven't, that have empty positions. They're going to be saved. I heard, I got an email from State last evening. They're looking for one piece of information that relates to our shake files for our MBTA communities. I emailed our consultant and I've and shot her back for Monday, but I mean, and I, the woman said we could have a conference call, but she never got back to me today, so that we know they're reviewing. This was our stuff for preliminary compliance. And, you know, we applied for the two mandatory mixed-use districts. We had to apply for them 90 days prior to town meeting. We applied on 12/20, which is more than 90 days prior to town meeting. The the goal was to try to, you know, be able to get some type of preliminary approval that we could tell the townspeople at town meeting where we are.
What do they want more?
Shake files.
You have to upload files.
It's it's CAD files.
Yeah.
You have, you had, you can't believe the amount of information we had to upload. And so they're looking for this because they're checking every piece of information and, you know, to determine if our stuff will be complied.
Since you know Milton has everybody on play at work, I don't know.
Right, so we we remain busy and we, I think we're gonna be busy for the foreseeable future. I mean, once we get this round of projects, there's more projects waiting in the wings. They're waiting. I advise them to wait till after town meeting to file when the zoning, after the zoning changes.
When is sale coming in? Or they don't?
I don't know, they. Walter Sullivan was delayed in getting the material to town council. Town council still will be doing a written opinion on what the path is needed for a building permit. He believes that limited site plan review is allowed, but he's finessing that, he's gonna be finessing that based on the plans and the new information that Walter knew. I mean, we may only have say on parking setbacks, a few things.
So I still think people need to know their home architecture.
Right, and so it's still, it's a public.
It's a public here.
It's a public, so I don't know yet. That's kind of all I have.
So can I go back? I got this wrong, but I have seven as a line for me. March 7th, not the 4th.
No, it's the second and fourth. The second and fourth Thursdays.
So I always think it's every other.
It's.
I think it's not every other Thursday.
No, it's just, I know, I messed up on my calendar too, I know.
It is.
You're gonna miss that. It's absolutely.
It's not every other, because he did it three times.
Yeah. There's a couple of times where we get a three week break.
That took me a year.
So it's March 14th and March 28th.
So we get a three week break.
This is, I'm gonna have five weeks.
So when, when, when are you not going to be here?
The 14th.
So I'm not gonna physically be here April 23rd. I'm not leaving in a few days.
Oh, April 10th.
Yes, I'm not gonna be here this week, but I don't.
Sorry, I, I don't, I mean, I think I just have stuff that's, it doesn't, that's not a special permit.
Yeah, we'll see.
As long as you can get the 28th, March 28th.
Or zoom in.
Karen, you're all set.
I think I'm all set.
Entertained.
Second. All right.
Don't be too passive about it. Thank you.